Thank you. This is Mayor Shave. It's Wednesday, August 19th, 2023 at 6:30 PM, and I call the Aberdeen City Council meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Councilmember Francie?
Yep.
Councilmember Gaken? Councilmember Catchman?
Here.
Councilmember Lawrence?
Here.
Councilmember Mackey? Councilmember Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Perchini?
Here.
Councilmember Ross?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Sidor?
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
I move that we excuse Councilmembers Mackey and Gaken. Second?
Motion was made seconded to excuse Councilmembers Mackey and Gaken. Is there any discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. He was here somewhere.
He was here.
Okay. Would everyone, please, join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For tonight's agenda, a couple of modifications. First of all, we're going to remove the community development presentation tonight, as well as change item, special committee items DB to a discussion item so that we can provide guidance on signage for the city. And I move that we approve the agenda as corrected.
Motion was made seconded to approve the agenda as corrected. Any discussion?
Quick question for clarification. The special item on the signs, can you explain that a little more? What are we doing with that?
So rather than having it be a report, I would like to change it to a discussion item so that we can provide feedback on the signage. And ultimately, our motion to send it back to the city. Yeah.
Thank you. Did we approve the agenda?
Approve the agenda.
We just need a vote on it.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor of approval of the agenda as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public comments. Anyone from the public who wants to comment on anything, come up to the podium, please. We try to allow three minutes to state your name and what ward you're in. Okay. See none, I'll move on to the consent agenda.
In tonight's consent agenda, there are minutes from the July 26th, 2023 meeting, our accounts payable payroll, as well as the July homeless numbers. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion was made seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is mayor's report. Saturday, September 30th, is exactly 40 years to the day since the Aberdeen History Museum opened at the Armory. That was in 1983. The city museum board, at their last meeting, asked the Friends of the Aberdeen Museum to plan and host an event to recognize this anniversary. The Rain Glow Festival event the Friends held in the 118 West Wishka Building was very enthusiastically received by the public. The Friends believe that now is the time to continue the momentum of interest in the community for this new facility. They are requesting that the contract for the building use be renewed, with just the dates being changed to August 28th to October 7th. The Friends will once again block the public from entering parts of the building beyond the front area of the first floor. This event will be held September 30th from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. The celebration will include numerous photos of the old museum facility from its original construction to events to the final displays. The Friends would also appreciate city council authorization to work with the city museum board collections committee to determine whether some photo duplicates or perhaps even recovered artifacts can be safely displayed for the event or left in the facility beyond that September 30th event for the public's enjoyment. A sign proclaiming the building to be the future home of the Aberdeen History Museum also seems appropriate. The museum board requested that the council authorize them to spend up to $5,000 on displays over an unspecified period. If the council authorizes these funds, a sign could be developed, or the Friends would prepare a sign that could be used for the next couple of months. This is a request that I thought that was very appropriate by the Friends of the museum. And I would like if council president Catchman would bring this up later on in, on the agenda, or now.
I believe it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay. Well, that's the story behind that. That's all I have. Moving on to council reports. Go ahead, Katie.
I had one housekeeping item. We had a budget workshop that was scheduled for September 6th, and there's been a request to move it to September 20th to just better allow time for prepping for that. So I move that we change that workshop from the 6th to the 20th, and time will remain the same at 6:30.
Give me the second?
Yes.
Motion was made seconded to change the council workshop from the 6th to the 20th. Is there any discussion? Under discussion?
Well, I know right now I wouldn't be able to make the 20th, but I could make the 6th, so I guess I'll just not be there.
Any further discussion?
If you have anything that you would like, you know?
Certainly.
Please, just on the network.
We can record it, too, I think.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Any other council reports? Councilmember Ellis?
Thank you. The first Tuesday of the month was neighbor night out, and I attended two events in Ward 3. They were both well-attended with activities for kids with food and an opportunity to interact with the community about concerns and thoughts. And for neighbors to meet neighbors and catch up and build community. And then, at the farmer's market this last Sunday, I was talking with representatives from the Dispute Resolution Center of Grace Harbor. They are hosting community conversations and training for people to learn how to mediate and facilitate discussions. I was very disappointed that the last voter turnout was so low. And I got to thinking, I just wonder if it's systematic of people not talking with each other, people not wanting to engage. And I hope that through community conversations, we can invite people to come and talk about things that are important to them. So I would really encourage people to go to the website for the Dispute Resolution Center of Grace Harbor. See a training and something that fits your schedule. And we have productive conversations on difficult topics. That would be a big benefit to our community as a whole. And then lastly, today, I was in a workshop put on by the Ruckles House. What is it? Ruckles House group, that's part of UW, that is holding meetings with various stakeholder groups around housing. And this is, this was requested as part of the legislature. And today's workshop was very productive. It gave me an opportunity to channel some of the discussions we've had in the homelessness group. They were looking for ideas on how the state can help be more responsive. So that was very productive, and a report will be coming out, and there are several other meetings scheduled with that group. And that's it.
Go ahead.
Recently, in driving through the east end of coming into Aberdeen along the bluff, I had an opportunity to observe what I assume is our new remote-controlled mower that lies low to the ground, and there was an operator out there using it. I didn't know we mowed in and around the bluff area. It was also near some of the signs as you come into town, like Welcome to Aberdeen and all that, or Aberdeen Lover Capital of the World. So I thought that was good. I didn't know we'd already gotten it and had it placed. It was good.
Councilmember Ross?
I just wanted to remind everyone that Summer Fest is coming up on Saturday, August 19th. This is a great family event, all day long, barbecues, games, music, cribbage tournaments. So don't forget it, mark calendars and hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Stacy.
Hi. Just a couple of reminders. The Homelessness Response Committee is having a community discussion with the faith community on Tuesday, August 15th, at the Rotary Club Pavilion. And then another thing I wanted to bring up is there's a volunteer opportunity with the Grace Harbor Conservation District. On Saturday, August 19th, they'll be conducting a creek cleanup at Wilson Creek in Aberdeen. Volunteers will meet at the corner of Wishka and South Fleet Street at 11:00 AM. They'll provide trash pickers, gloves, and trash bags, and will have everything you need to do your part to make a difference in keeping the water clean. They do ask that volunteers that would like to show up RSVP, and you can find a link for that on their Facebook page, Grace Harbor Conservation District. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else? See none. I'll move on to staff reports. City administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, we have our, it's our first day of the state auditor's office, performing their financial and performance audit. The mayor and I have a brief kickoff meeting with them tomorrow morning. We have been diligently going through the budget process, the directors and I. I'm really proud of the work that they're putting in. They're putting in a lot of hard work and really hard discussions with their staff to make sure we provide a budget to you. This last week, we talked about the budget amendment with Tara, our finance and accounting consultant. And so if things are looking pretty good, we definitely have, yeah, I think we're making good progress that way. The chief green, I sent out an email about potential parking permits or that we are going to be issuing parking permits. So I'll make sure that all of you get your parking permits when they come around. So we'll get those issued to you. And thank you, Councilmember Morrison, about mentioning the community discussion that we will be having. I believe that's it. If you have any questions on my report, please let me know.
Thank you. Director's report. Our chief.
Stacy, I'm on the other side. Can you?
Yes. I'm being promoted right now to panelist.
Just panelists, not any.
So I wanted to give you guys a quick report on how the fire program went this summer with the Twin Harbor Skill Center. So from recall, we entered into a partnership with the Aberdeen School District, mainly the Twin Harbor Skill Center, to offer a summer program for kids to kind of get interested in firefighting and EMS. With this, this is a two-and-a-half-week program that was offered. We ended up with eight students from various high schools through the Twin Harbors. And they spent those two-and-a-half weeks, a combination of at our fire station, at our training grounds, and at the high school, kind of learning the ins and outs of what, you know, the life of a firefighter is like and what it is we do. The program, we concentrated on some basic firefighting skills, things like ladders, fire hose, hydrants. They actually got to pump some of the fire apparatus. Extrication, actually got to play with the jaws of life and cut some cars apart. Search and rescue, things of that nature. And on the medical side, they got to kind of learn how it is to be a paramedic. We didn't start a better judgment, we let them play with some needles and start IVs on a mannequin, not ourselves. Little self-preservation there. Cardiac monitors and what the heart does, and a lot of the medic-type stuff kind of exposed them to that as well. So I've got a quick little two-minute or so video to kind of give you an overview of what the program was like. So Stacy, I don't know what my volume's at, so.
Oh. You for the TV?
I don't want to.
It'll be fine.
Supposed to be music, but yes.
Probably your setting, dude.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to think. The TV volume's on.
About here?
That must have been entering a house that was all smoky, pulling the hose in like that.
No, he can't hear.
That's how I have to open the door on my car.
He did eventually get that door on. Okay, so a great program. A lot of great feedback from the school district, from the students and from our staff. So we are looking forward to doing this again next year. Hopefully, word will spread, and we'll get a few more kids to jump on board if we want to do this. So again, special thanks to the school district for entering into this partnership with us. Like I said, it really worked out well. Also, the main group of instructors we had, I had firefighter Berman Rayner, firefighter medic Will Ivern Affey, and town chief Dave Swinhardt, also from Hoekham. They partnered with us and helped out a little bit. Captain Larissa Rohr and Captain Rich McMinn, they helped as well. And really special thanks to Mitch Howland, our fire service specialist. He actually kind of stole this from me. We kind of started putting it together, and he took the ball and ran with it and really made the program a great success. I'd like to take the credit for it, but really Mitch is the one that really stepped up, and kudos to him for that. So any questions about the program?
First off, I'm just thrilled to see that there was a mix of not only young men, but young women. That's great. Is there, do you accept students at any point in time of when they're in high school? Or do they have to be between their junior and senior years, or what?
So for this program, it is junior and senior year.
Okay.
That's how the Skill Center is set up for this program. So it's juniors and seniors, yes.
And I was just curious, one last question. I know for safety reasons, they probably couldn't get close to fire, but did you have any actual fire that they had to put out or smoke they had to go in a room?
No, so we didn't have any actual fire that they, just for that reason, liability reasons. We couldn't do any live-fire training with them. Best we could do was get them in the gear, kind of cover up their masks like they're in a fire, and have them crawl around and kind of simulate that. So we are limited to how realistic we can make it based on those liability.
I was wondering, that's great. What a wonderful program. That's terrific.
Yeah, really. Again, ecstatic that we're able to do this.
Did you have any students that decided that they wanted to pursue a job as a medic or firefighter?
There are a couple, for sure, yes. There were a couple that, I feel like a fun thing to do, but hopefully that fun thing to do translates into, yeah, I could do this as a career. But there were a couple that came into it that they have this on their radar. So that was really nice to offer to those people.
That was the goal of this partnership with the school district, because there are certain positions that we have here at the city that are very difficult to recruit and retain talent. Firefighters or EMS paramedics, firefighters, police officers, and sewer and water distribution managers are very difficult to come by. So that's why we created that partnership for long-term recruitment purposes. We tried to get a program. Danny Smith, our HR director, worked really closely with the Skill Center, her counterpart over at the Skill Center, to get job descriptions out there. WCIA restricted us from allowing internships over at the sewer plant for liability reasons. So, you know, but that is something like we are looking to, they understand that there are shortages in those public works positions. So that's something hopefully in the future we can kind of foster and kind of, you know, allow students to understand that there's other options here and options here, and that the city can be an employer of choice, so.
Thanks, Chief Golding. That was a great program.
Thank you.
Moving on to requests for council action items, starting with finance department. Councilmember Perchini?
We have a request from finance and the park director recommending that the city council authorize an additional $5,000 to the museum fund 125 for supplies and equipment to build artifact displays at 118 West Wishka. I move that we adopt this.
Second? Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion, under discussion?
Yeah, I propose modifying this to include signage. It would be a motion that needs a second.
Well, I'm willing to amend my second to accept that. Do you want to amend the motion to include signage?
It's would not be with equipment.
Well. So are you talking about the signage that I mentioned in my report?
Yeah, reach your site of the Aberdeen Museum, if that would be included in this.
Well, I think there's a little misunderstanding of what I was reporting on in what this report is.
They're two different things.
They're two different things.
Okay. Well, I'll just resolve my motion then.
Okay. Motion was made and seconded to approve this report. Is there any further discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And that was it for finance. Moving on to public safety, chair report by councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Shave. So our committee met this evening at 6 o'clock, and I have two brief reports from the fire chiefs, and we have one agenda item this evening. So from the Aberdeen Fire Department, call statistics for July were 575 incidents, which was just slightly over last year's numbers. The homeless response data includes 42 EMS responses, 23 fire responses, with a total month of July 65. The overdose response data for the month of July 20 incidents, bringing the total to 129. The American Red Cross has their smoke alarm program, which we've participated in for the last few years. And the Aberdeen Fire Department has recently received word that the Red Cross has chosen Aberdeen for their annual smoke alarm emphasis campaign. And the Aberdeen Fire Department will be partnering with the Red Cross to do the smoke alarm sweep in Aberdeen this fall. And the fire grant that we applied for last month, we did receive the $25,000 grant from the State of Washington Department of Labor and Industries, which will go towards the SCBA washer, which will be a huge help to the Aberdeen Fire Department. Moving on to the police department. Their activity report for the year is 19,573 calls. It's still trending down about 16% from last year. There are 13, there were 13 registered locations for National Line App that occurred on August 1st. I think that's wonderful. It's grown from the last couple of years. And next week, August 15th, they're going to, they will be able to start enforcing drug possession. And they've ordered the True Narc Drug Analyzer, which is being paid for with drug seizure funds. And the Washington State Patrol crime lab has announced they will take submissions as well for cases. And in the personnel side of things, they have three recruits that are very close to finishing their training and moving into working in the department. And Officer Dylan Mudenbaugh has successfully completed his 12-week field training program and is now on solo patrol. And Abby Twibel has been given a job offer as a police officer. She's scheduled to start on November 1st, and her academy must begin on November 14th. And they've had entry-level applications successfully passed and oral boards test. The next step will be the chief's interview. They still have a total of three vacancies. Our agenda item this evening, we have a report, I'm sorry. We have a request from the fire chief that the city council approve the Public Consulting Group Emergency Services Agreement between the City of Aberdeen and Public Consulting Group for the ground emergency transport program. I move we adopt this report.
Motion was made and seconded to adopt this. Motion was made and seconded to adopt this report, is there any discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's it for Public Safety this evening.
Thank you. Public Works Chair Report by Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you Mayor. Um, Public Works has a report authorizing the Public Works Director to execute supplemental agreement number two with David Evans and Associates, an engineering firm for the US Highway 12 separation project. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to adopt this report, is there any discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under ordinances and resolutions, Public Works has the first reading of the ordinance on the proposed location of a portion of Rogers Street within block 10 of the flat of Northern Pacific Edition. I move to approve the first reading.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to approve the first reading of this ordinance, is there any discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all from Public Works.
Thank you. Special committee items.
Yes, a couple items here tonight to go over. Um, first of all is a request from the Community Development Director that the City Council approve the Historic Preservation Commission's recommendation and place 118 West Wishka on the local historical register. I move that we accept this request.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to approve this request, is there any discussion? See none, all?
I have a question.
Under discussion, go ahead.
I know that they had to have a public hearing. I was wondering if there was any public comment at that hearing, because I'm not sure. I don't know seeing anything about.
I'm aware, yeah, Director Scott is not here today, so I can get that answer for you though.
Thank you.
On the return.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
I, I think it'd be important to put it on the record, just for community input, that, um, some questions were raised and I know it helped satisfy the questions I had about. So this will actually help alleviate certain costs in renovating the building because, uh, if it's on the historic register, apparently you don't have to comply with all city codes relative to renovation in the flood zone, so that'll help. Um, and then I guess also because it's on the historic register, some historic registers, you have to be, whenever you renovate, you have to comply with the historical characteristics and make sure they're all compliant and similar construction quality and type. And correct me if I'm wrong in this, but it's my understanding that that's not necessary when it's on the local historic register. So, I think these are positive things that may not have been relatively evident or apparent in the request, so.
Hey, thank you. Is there any other discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. While we're, if I may, while we're on that subject of 118 West Wishka, the item that I mentioned earlier is a request from the Friends of the Museum to renew the, the contract they had for the Glow Festival for these dates that I read out here. August 28th to October 7th. Um, that's what I was talking about. They, they want to have, um, put together, uh, to, uh, an event to recognize the anniversary of the Aberdeen Historical Museum. And that's what I was mentioning earlier. So what they're asking for is to be able to use the building similarly to what they did for the Glow Festival, only they would display photos and so forth of the history of the museum. Under discussion?
Um, Mayor, would that impact, um, the construction schedule?
No.
So, may I make a motion?
One second, there's a question.
Well, I'm, it sounds like there's gonna be a motion, then we can have proper discussion.
Okay. So I move to, uh, allow them to use the 118 West Wishka Building for, to recognize the 40th anniversary of the museum during the time schedule that they noted.
Yeah?
Sorry?
Thank you, there's a motion and it was seconded to allow the museum to, the Friends of the Museum to use the 118 West Wishka Building. Uh, says here, um, August 28th to October 7th. Is there any discussion on that? Councilmember Shaw?
Yes. Um, first of all, I want to make it clear, I don't, I'm not opposed to this proposal or this idea. It's about the process for the reason. And I didn't say anything about the Glow Fest, but I want to make sure we're not getting into the habit of bypassing our museum board. I don't know if this has been to the museum board, but under the, we have appointed and empowered a board to manage this and bring stuff to us. And under the Aberdeen, I'm sorry, Katie, are you rolling your eyes?
Oh, no.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have misunderstood. So, but we have a museum board and under the Aberdeen Municipal Code, we have charged them with the responsibility of developing plans and programs for the preservation and recognition of the historical heritage of the city and the surrounding area, including the maintenance and display of city property transferred to the care and custody of the board. It shall develop and coordinate historical projects for the city. It shall have the power to apply for and accept gifts, donations, requests and grants in the name of the city for the collection and displays. And so I just want to make sure that, um, that we're not, um, that everybody is working together and that a really good idea is still coming to us through the correct process.
Thank you.
May I share, Mayor?
Well, let me, let me answer that. Here's what I read earlier. This is the first paragraph, I'll repeat that. Saturday, September 30th is exactly 40 years to the day since the Aberdeen History Museum opened at the Armory in 1983. The City Museum Board, at their last meeting, asked the Friends of the Aberdeen Museum to plan and host an event to recognize this anniversary.
Thank you, I didn't hear that, I didn't process that part.
You're welcome. So that, so that's, that's where we're at with this. Go ahead Katie.
I also fully support what the Friends are doing here. I just question if this is a matter for the council. I mean, there's not an agreement that's in front of us to decision. I think it's something, can't city decide whether they're going to open this building up or not?
That, that's where I was headed with this. Was that, I already took this to the league, when they initially wanted to use it, I took it to our legal team and they determined that this was an operational and a business decision that the mayor could make without the City Council's approval.
Well, this was my, I'm sorry, this was my idea to get the council.
No, that's great, you want to.
Approval of this whole thing.
So, so you don't, you're not seeking a removal of, withdrawal of the motion?
I, I do, I want the council's approval to move forward, so. Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Ellis.
Um, so, I, I, I would gather that, um, the, the building was cleaned up well enough to hold the, um, the event for the Glow Festival. And so it's probably very functional for what's being exposed. I just wanted to, to make sure that this isn't slowing down any other sort of major renovations that, um, would affect the, the building reopening in, in afford capacity.
Yeah, it, it won't affect anything.
Okay.
Okay. Well, if the council approves this, does that mean they don't need to apply for any permits or anything like that? Or do they still need to go through a permitting process? Or, and are there gonna be adequate provisions made to ensure public safety and things like that?
That's correct, they'll go through the same process they did for the Glow Festival, which included requirement of insurance and so forth on their behalf.
And if they're serving any food, um, they would have to get food.
And they'll have fire extinguishers there and, you know, okay.
Hey, anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
All right, the, the second to the last item on the agenda tonight is, um, this was modified to be a discussion item, um, so that we can provide feedback to the city administrator regarding the designs that have been presented, um, for the Wishka River Bridge sign replacement. So, um, my thought with this item would be to provide some feedback to Ruth regarding the items that we've seen. And, I mean, if council really wants to vote on this item, we can. But I think in the spirit of collaboration, it would be best if the, if the city works with, um, Mr. Quigg to come up with a design that works for everyone and goes through the approval process rather than accepting or potentially rejecting this item and going back to square one. So I'll open it up for any discussion about, um, the designs and if we want to move forward with those designs or provide feedback for some changes.
Well, I really like what we have now. I agree that it could be cleaned up a little bit. It's been there a few years and it's fading and bleeding a little bit. But I do not care for either of the, um, proposals that were presented to us at the last meeting.
There's a, there's a couple of pictures of their proposal on, by, by Debbie Paratini there. Anybody wants to look?
I was just gonna say, I completely agree with Councilmember Ross. And I think you kinda said it best when we discussed this before, Ruth, that it's like, oh, hi, welcome to Aberdeen. And here's all the other places that you can go. That's what I see when I look at those. And I really appreciate the effort that went into them, but again, like Councilmember Ross said, I, I like what's there, if, if we could get something like that, I mean, that's what we have. I, I think that was the ideal.
Just driving back into town yesterday, I made a point of looking at the existing sign and going, you know, I like it, yeah, maybe it could be a little brighter and bolder, a little fresh coat of paint. Uh, and I still hate that period, uh, we need to get rid of that period. My, my grammatical sense of style is getting offended, but I agree with the sentiment. I like the existing sign and I don't, I'm not interested in seeing any of these other options that have been proposed.
Councilmember Shaw?
I think, um, the, the sign that we have, for people who don't remember, is a replica of the original sign before it was changed. And that is the sign that, um, you know, takes people into what we call are trying to create our historical district. So I think that we should re, refresh our historical sign as an entry to our historical district.
Councilmember Ellis?
Um, I, I'm gonna echo the sentiments that I've heard, that I also like the existing sign and yes, it can be, um, freshened up and make it look better. Um, the, the options that were presented to us, I don't think the arrows are really indicative of how people wanna plan their journey, um, going to the, the ocean shores, ocean beaches, take a, take a right. It's gonna put people at, in, at our new traffic circle, they'll, they'll spin around and.
Well, what's, yeah, and you're right on, because, uh, somebody's gonna make a trip to ocean shores, they planned it from wherever they started. They know they have to go through Aberdeen.
Um, I think, and we're well-known as a gateway to the Olympics. I think it's, uh, something that we can be proud of. And I would like to see that sign remain. And perhaps there might be an effort that looks into, um, providing nightlights on that bridge, which would be really spectacular.
The, the, the big issue that was presented to us by Mr. Quigg was that, uh, his efforts would provide the, the new sign. And, and the, the person that makes the sign would donate it and install it at no cost. So that's kind of the, what's hanging over our heads, uh, to, 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 to do something. However, um, we can certainly do something on our own to renew that sign and keep it, um, uh, to the original state. And I, I would like to, like that.
I have a question, um, does Washdott have input into what goes on there?
Yes.
Uh, I, I'm sure they do. And so, I, I don't even know if Washdott would approve what was.
He said it was all approved by Washdott.
Okay.
Yes.
But well, Washdott, Washdott won't dictate what is there, they'll just approve what we want.
They'll review a design.
And they've already approved the one we have.
Yeah.
They've approved that one, they've approved these designs as well. Josh Hef did have a.
Oh, Josh?
Yeah, um, in other cities I've seen, um, signs that, uh, are before the turns, like if we wanted a sign that says that Westport's this way and Ocean Shore's this way, um, just like on the side of the road, so it's not too just racking.
I think there is.
Well, I think there, there are signs, after you go through the bridge, uh, there are signs at Westport, this left lane.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead Katie.
Oh, I agree with everyone's sentiments, which is why I had changed this to a discussion item. So hopefully the city has some more feedback. Um, but I agree that this bridge and the sign is an icon of Aberdeen now. And so I would like to see it remain in the same, you know, welcome to Aberdeen type fashion.
And I think that if, if we do renew an effort to replace the sign ourselves, I hope we can do it in better colors.
And happy to make a motion when we're ready to do that for any money that the city might need to manufacture that sign or install it.
Okay, it seems like we're all pretty much in accord with this issue.
I heard that there, I heard the feedback I heard was that, um, there's really no, um, that we would like to maybe move away from this particular design and stick with the one that we have. Um, and, um, not have any mention of any other cities. Um, and consider installing lights, if that's a possibility. Um, and then possibly maybe updating them to different colors, if I heard that.
Well, this, the sign that's on there really does need to be, um, replaced. And I'm told that it's not a matter of cleaning the, where the signage is running or anything like that, it needs to be replaced. And so, um, the, the, what I'm, what I suggested about color was that the replacement be more Aberdeen colors.
That was some of the comment when the sign came, was gifted to us a few years ago, was there was some license was taken, um, in terms of the colors given the donor was from Hoquim.
Wasn't that the original colors of the sign?
No.
Really? That's what I was saying.
So, okay, any more discussion on this?
Can I have just one more thing?
Yes.
I would like to thank the city administrator for making sure this didn't fall through the cracks. This is the kind of thing that pops up at a meeting and then the next thing you know, three months have gone by and we haven't really dealt with it. So I really appreciate the follow-up and the opportunity to, um, to, you know, talk with them.
All right, thank you. Lastly, on our agenda, I have some appointments to make to the City of Aberdeen Art Commission. And the appointments are, with terms expiring on the second Monday of 2028, Randy Bearbauer, Richard Woods, Sylvia Dickerson, Will Russell and Jan Swan. I'd like council approve, approval of these appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to accept these appointments to the City of Aberdeen Art Commission. Any discussion, under discussion?
The Art Commission, so one thing I understand that they may do, uh, is look at proposals or make some proposals for art, like in the roundabout that we have, that, that perhaps there'll be something there.
I think there'll be part of that, but there's another group already that's looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, the mayor, um, tasked me with, like, working with a group, the, like, Grace Harbor Art Guild, to consider putting together. to consider putting together a framework around some sort of proposal for artwork and also to seek out funding sources. And so this group put together the entire framework, the selection process, you know, just all of, you know, and even where grants will come from, because we definitely, you know, don't want to ask the city for money. We want to be able to leverage grant funding to be able to do it. And so they have something really great put together and hopefully they'll be able to hand it off to the Arts Commission to just kind of fulfill it.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I forgot to mention, the council representative is Councilman Yakin. Any other discussion?
Mayor Shay. There's no requirement to reside in city limits on this commission, right?
I don't think so.
Stacy, do you know the answer to that?
Two of the members, I think it's a minimum of two members have to reside in the city limits of Aberdeen. And there's something about a business owner and someone who's in the arts, that there is some flexibility to have people outside of Aberdeen on the committee.
Let me run down the list here. Randy Bearbauer owns a business in Aberdeen and he resides in Aberdeen. Richard Woods resides in Hoquim. Sylvia Dickerson resides in Aberdeen and serves on our Aberdeen Arts Committee. Will Russell is part of the Downtown Aberdeen Association and he resides in Aberdeen. And Jan Swan resides in Aberdeen. So, most of them are all right.
Will resides in Montesey, but he does run.
Somebody asked us that no more than two members at a given time may reside outside the Aberdeen City.
I think you're at two. You're at two, so you're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one of the things I had asked Stacy, as she's working with this group, I think historically that this group is really focused on like visual art. And so since there is this movement to make a music district and a arts district, to expand it, to include performance art and music and to kind of include those other realms of art.
Any more discussion? We need to vote on this, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. There's nothing else for the council? Good to the order?
Are we doing that tonight, it's not on the agenda, so I wasn't sure.
I'm bringing it up. Anything for good of the order?
Was there a second public comment period?
It's not on the agenda tonight. Future agenda.
Oh, it's on there.
Oh.
Not on the notes.
Oh, it's on the regular agenda, so there is a second public comment period. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment, come up to the podium, state your name and word and try to keep it to three minutes? See you nuns?
I move re-adjourn, a second.
Motion was made and seconded to adjourn, if there's no objection, I will adjourn the meeting.